Invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Will the city clerk please take roll?
Present.
Davis Reinhardt. Bud Starker.
Present.
Joyce J.
Present.
Kristy Davis.
Present.
Mike Stites.
Here.
George Vaughn.
Present.
Joseph Demott.
Present.
Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
I'd like to ask that everybody at this time please silence or turn out your cellphones before we continue on. And then, is there a motion to approve the minutes of April 23, 2012?
So moved. Second.
If a motion for approval was seconded by Councilmember Starker, discussion on the main motion. Please poll the council. Motion carries seven to zero with Mrs. Langworthy abstaining. Thank you. We'll have, move on to proclamations and ceremonies. We have two. I'll run down to the podium. I'd like to ask our folks from the Pride Mark and from the Weirich Fire Department and our police chief to please step forward today. We have two proclamations for public safety. And the chief is sporting his new, um, flat top. Looks a little bit like Bart Simpson, though. I don't know.
Should've done that. I could've done that.
I'd also like to, Courtney Morehouse, is she here, Courtney? Our first proclamation is Emergency Medical Services Week, May 20 through May 26, 2012. I'm going to ask our city clerk to please read the proclamation.
Whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service and the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas the emergency medical services system consists of emergency physicians, nurses, and medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others who, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, I, Jerry DeTulio, Mayor, and the City Council of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 20th to the 26th, 2012, Emergency Medical Services Week. And encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado to be affixed this 14th day of May, 2012. Signed by Mayor DeTulio.
Good evening. Thank you for recognizing us and all of our services here this evening. It is quite an honor for us to be able to serve, serve the city. We've been in the city for quite some time now, and we're pleased to do it. And we thank you very much for honoring all of us tonight. Thank you for having us.
Our next proclamation is Police Officers Memorial Day and Police Week. I ask the county clerk to please read the proclamation. Chief, say if you will.
Whereas in, whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation designating May 15th as Police Officers Memorial Day and the calendar week of May 15th as Police Week. Whereas police officers are heroes who risk their lives to keep our families and communities safe, going to work not knowing what dangers might lie ahead, making tremendous sacrifices to uphold justice and protect the innocent. Whereas it is fitting and proper that we express our gratitude for the dedicated service and courageous deeds of law enforcement officers. Whereas 250 Colorado police officers have made the ultimate sacrifice while serving our communities. Whereas Police Week is in recognition of the service given by the men and women who, night and day, protect us through enforcement of our laws. And whereas Police Officers Memorial Day is in honor of those police officers who, through their courageous deeds, have put their lives on the line to protect ours, paying the ultimate sacrifice or becoming disabled in the performance of duty. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council of Wheat Ridge do hereby proclaim the week of May 13th to 19th, 2012, as the City of Wheat Ridge Police Week. And May 15th as the City of Wheat Ridge Police Officers Memorial Day. And express our appreciation and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and honor the service of all fallen officers killed in the light of duty and their families. In witness thereof, on this 14th day of May, 2012, sign my mayor, DeTulio.
Just a couple of quick notes. First of all, again, thanks to council and the mayor, all of our elected officials for the support that you show to the police department in terms of the programs and the services we bring to our community. Thanks to the community for their support of many of the programs that we bring in an effort to, to enhance this community, make the quality of life better. And a reminder to council that tomorrow is our annual police awards ceremony. It'll be at 3 o'clock, and it'll be an opportunity to recognize not only community members in our community who have, have gone above and beyond in terms of their assistance that they've provided to the police department, but we'll also honor some of our law enforcement partners, as well as our own employees, in regards to some of the outstanding work that they've done this past year. Thank you again.
So once again, thanks to our Weirich Fire Department, Weirich Police Department, and our Pride Mark, and all our EMT services. Thanks for being part of the City of Wheat Ridge. The next item on the agenda is citizens' right to speak. Please step forward if you'd like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda. Speakers have three minutes. May it get up to nine minutes if they have people signed up for them. Please spell your last name for the record, and please state your city or your address.
Sure. We did sign in. Thank you. Hi, I'm Amanda Fitzsimmons. That's F-I-T-Z-S-I-M-O-N-S. And I'm here on behalf tonight of Breathe Easy Wheat Ridge and also Jefferson County Public Health to give you guys an update on some work we've been doing in your community. And I have with me Emma and Tasha from Wheat Ridge High School. And they're going to talk to you guys very briefly about a photo voice project they just did on how tobacco impacts their world. And what photo voice is, is it's giving cameras to individuals in a community to allow them to take pictures and talk about a community issue through their eyes. So I'm going to turn it over to Emma and Tasha. Why don't one of you guys hold it, one of you guys talk? Oh, I can hold it.
Good evening, and thank you for having us. I'm Tasha Taylor.
And I'm Emma Milik. And like Amanda said, we're freshmen at Weirich High School.
So could you please spell your last names for the record?
My last name's T-A-Y-L-O-R.
Thank you.
And mine's Milik, M-I-L-E-K.
Thanks.
So what we've been doing is, we've got cameras and we went around the city and the, and took pictures of our community, and that's not even half of the pictures we got. And, and we did a school cleanup across the park. And considering it's like illegal for youth to buy tobacco and stuff, it was a lot we found.
We found 3,100 cigarette butts in less than an hour in the park across from our school.
And that's just a little area of what we did, and that's like considered like a lot.
Yeah, so this picture right here was taken in the park that we cleaned up. And as you can see, there's teenagers here, and like Tasha said, it is illegal for teenagers to buy tobacco. So we thought that it was really ridiculous that most of the cigarettes we found were maybe used by teenagers at a point, and that's the picture.
And one of the pictures my friend Marissa took, she couldn't be here tonight, but she took this picture of a lady, and she is smoking. And as you can see, it's really close to a park playground where kids are playing on it. And that's not only impacting her, but it impacts all the kids that go and play there.
So we would, we just wanted to show how it affects our world and how it affects kids on a daily basis.
And hope that we can get tobacco-free playgrounds and parks so we can have a tobacco-free community.
Thank you.
Thank you. We also just have a copy of an article for council on the tobacco cleanup as well, so I'll leave that with the clerk.
You said you found 3,100 cigarette butts at Crown Hill, right across the street from the school?
Crown Hill and then right around, across the street from Crown Hill as well, so...
I think we know who most of those students are over there.
We, we met most of them as well. And we had, that particular event, we had 38 Everett Middle School students in addition to 22 Wheat Ridge High School students helping, so...
Well, I saw you cleaning up, so thanks for doing all that work, so appreciate it.
It was our pleasure. Thank you, guys.
Do we have anybody else here for public comment tonight on any item not on the agenda? Hello? Please spell your last name for the record.
My name is Nancy Waring, W-A-R-I-N-G. I'm, I'm here for the same reason that these girls are. I worked with Amanda and the girls on the project at Weirich High School. I'm the president of the PTA at Weirich High School. And I'm very passionate as well about this whole issue of secondhand smoking and how it affects our community. And there's a couple other reasons I'm passionate about it. I'm a school nurse, and what I, part of what I do as a school nurse is I work in the classroom educating the students about tobacco and the dangers of tobacco. And many times I hear stories of these kids, and young kids, whose parents smoke, their grandparents smoke, and they'll ask me questions like, "Oh, am I going to get lung cancer? You know, am I going to be really sick? When I have asthma and my dad smokes around me, I get really sick and I don't feel good and I miss school." So it impacts, in that way, it impacts them as well. And then also, my husband is a surgeon in the community here at Lutheran Hospital, and he mostly takes care of cancer patients. And we've been married 23 years, and being a nurse, I'm always interested in what he's doing. And when he used to first talk about some of the cases he would do, and they had to do with lung cancer and, and smoking, it was like, well, these people had lung cancer because they smoked cigarettes and had smoked for 40 years or whatever. But now, the stories have changed. He'll come home and I'll ask him about it, and he'll say, "Well, this person never smoked a day in their life, but their parents smoked while they were growing up." Or this person worked in a restaurant where they smoked in a bar. The people that they worked with as a waitress or waiter smoked in the bar, you know, around for 20 or 30 years. And I, I think there's enough medical evidence now. It's, it's very, very clear that secondhand smoke has a very negative impact on our community. So that's what I wanted to say. I'm passionate about hopefully getting some of these ordinance passes, passed to make our, our community more healthy in terms of the playgrounds and bus stops and that kind of thing. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else for public comment on any item not on the agenda? Please step forward. Thank you. We'll move on to, is there any changes to the agenda this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Councilmember Demott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have 10 items for the consent agenda tonight. Item 1A, motion to approve payment to Atlantis Pool Plastering Incorporated, DBA Atlantis Aquatic Group in the amount of $66,777 for the refinishing of the recreation center lap pool. 1B, motion to cancel the study session of May 21st, 2012. C, motion to approve award of ITB 1211 Bus Shelter Installation Project to JL Melton Construction Incorporated of Denver, Colorado, in the contract amount of $31,075 and a contingency amount of $3,100. Item D, motion to approve payment to MSN Communications Incorporated in the amount of $102,674. I have a hole through that. I think it's 80 some cents.
81 cents.
81. Item E, approval of payment in the amount of $40,684 to Wheat Ridge 2020 for Phase Two of the implementation of the 38th Avenue Corridor Plan. Item F, motion to award purchase of new playground equipment in Paramount Park to Miracle Recreation Equipment Company in the amount of $52,076.80. Item G, motion to award demolition of existing playground equipment, installation of new playground equipment and related site work in Paramount Park to Churchick Recreation Company, LLC, in the amount of $17,931.86. H, resolution number 25, 2012, amending the fiscal year 2012 general fund budget to reflect the approval of supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $7,000 and the acceptance of a 2012 CDOT grant to support the Checkpoint Colorado program. Item I, motion to approve payment of the sales tax increment for April of fiscal year 2012 from the Town Center Project in the amount of $36,112.06 to the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority, or Renewal Wheat Ridge. J, resolution number 27, 2012, approving an intergovernmental agreement for cooperative purchasing purposes between the City of Wheat Ridge and HGAC Buy. Is the motion in order?
Sure. Does anybody like to pull anything off the consent?
I guess I would like to, we have the bus shelter, but there's a discussion later about the best... The discussion later about best service at 32nd Avenue and 38th, and we have quite a few shelters on there. Can we pull it and then vote on that one separate? Or at least have a discussion about it?
So which item is that?
1C.
So...
I move to pull 1C.
Okay, so go ahead and pull 1C.
I move to approve item 1A, B, D, E, F, G, H, I, and J.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion approval of the consent agenda, seconded by Councilmember Stites and Reinhardt with, with, less item C. Discussion on the main motion. Please poll the, please poll the council. I did. I did reset it. Could you vote? Please poll the council again. Who knows? Tracy King? There you go. Motion carries eight, zero. Thank you. Item 1C, Councilmember Langworthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to approve award of ITB 1211 Bus Shelter Installation Project to JL Melton Construction, Inc., Denver, Colorado, in the contract amount of $31,075 and a contingency amount of $3,100. The city purchased 30 bus stop shelters last November utilizing a state faster funding advancements for surface transportation and economic recovery transit fund grant. A contractor has been selected for installation of the shelters, which are expected to be delivered in early June. The apparent responsible and responsive bidder is JL Melton Construction, Inc., Denver, Colorado, in the total amount of $31,075. The company's reference and experiences were evaluated by public work staff as a basis for recommendation. Do I make the motion now and then discussion?
Sure. Make the motions in order so we can have discussion?
Okay. I move to award ITB 1211 Bus Shelter Installation Project to JL Melton Construction, Inc., Denver, in the amount of $31,075 with a contingency amount of $3,107. And that the director of public works be authorized to issue change orders up to a total contract and contingency amount of $34,182.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval of item 1C, seconded by Councilmember Stites. Discussion, comments?
I guess for me, I, we, we just were notified of potential changes to our bus services in Wheat Ridge, and I want to make sure that we don't put up bus shelters and stops where we may not have any use for them. And I know that we got a faster grant, and we've already purchased them. Is there, in the event that we cannot do anything to prevent some of these changes, are there other places those shelters can go to?
I'm Tim Perano, Director of Public Works. The shelters that we will be installing can be moved to other locations. They may be, find where they are because with the call and ride service, my understanding is that a lot of folks that use call and ride may call and then be picked up at a previous bus stop location. So these may end up being used that way. If they are not, we could then move them a year from now if we have bus route changes to another location within the city.
Any other questions for staff?
Tim, wouldn't, yeah, I guess if these changes came, wouldn't the frequency of use change? Would we not be likely to have a different preference for places?
More than likely, that is true. And we do have other locations we would then move these, take these down and move them to another location.
But the staff recommendation, would we move forward with what we're doing now and make changes later if that was necessary?
Yes, because right now, if we're successful in retaining 32, there's only one location that is at risk, and that's the one down at 26th and Kipling.
Thank you. So you have a motion for approval, it was seconded. Please poll the council on item 1C. Motion carries eight, zero. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is ordinances on first reading. The purpose of first reading is to set the date and time of the public hearing called the second reading. Amendments by council are allowed on first reading. Public comment is not allowed until second reading. Item 2, Councilmember Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Council Bill Number 06, 2012, an ordinance amending the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws, Chapter 2, Section 253B regarding membership of boards and commissions, and Sections 253F concerning the administering of oath to the board and commission members. Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 06, 2012, an ordinance amending the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws regarding membership of boards and commissions and the administering of oaths to those members on first reading, order it published, and set for a public hearing June 11th, 2012, at 7:00 PM in City Council Chambers.
Is there a second? We have a motion to approve item number 2, was seconded by Councilmember Demott. Please poll the council. Motion carries eight, zero. Thank you. Item 3 is Council Bill Number 04-2012. Councilmember Pond?
Thank you. Council Bill Number 04, 2012, an ordinance amending Section 11-53B of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning application of the state liquor laws within the city. A provision of the Colorado Liquor Code, CRS 12-47101XSEC, prevents local governments from issuing liquor license to establishments that are located within 500 feet of any public or private school, university, college, campus, or seminary unless a local government eliminates or reduces that distant requirement by ordinance. Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 4-2012, an ordinance amending Section 11-53B of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning application of the state liquor laws on first reading. Order it published and set for public hearing on June 11th, 2012, at 7:00 PM in City Council Chambers, and that it takes, and that it takes effect immediately.
Second.
We have a motion for approval of item number 3, was seconded by Mr. Stites. Please poll the council. Motion carries eight, zero. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is decisions, resolutions, and motions. Item 4 is Resolution Number 24-2012. Councilmember Davis?
Resolution Number 24-2012, a resolution approving the establishment of a business development zone encompassing the entire city of Wheat Ridge.
Mr. Starker?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to recuse myself on this item.
By unanimous consent, does anybody have a problem if Mr. Starker recuses himself and leaves the room? You are excused. Mr. Starker has not left the building, though.
So the issue since the inception, the Business Development Zone BDZ program has been used on a limited and inconsistent basis. Recently, staff has received inquiries from existing and new businesses about inclusion into BDZ districts. At the April 16th, 2012 study session, staff asked council for guidance on the implementation of the BDZ program, and a consensus was reached to create a BDZ district encompassing the entire city of Wheat Ridge and, to target, city of Wheat Ridge. There's, I don't know what we're, and to target.
Hi, vote. Is there a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 24-2012, a resolution designating the entire city of Wheat Ridge as a business development zone pursuant to Code, Section 22, Division 5.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve item 4, was seconded by Councilmember Stites. Do we have anybody here from the public to speak at item 4? Council questions or concerns? Ms. J?
I remember discussing this at study session. We had a good, good debate about it. Not debate, really, a very advisable thing for our city. There are a couple recommendations from staff, niche and special retail, gardening, landscape, et cetera, and primary employers. Does that mean we are limited to that, or is that just a suggestion by...
Those are the focus area recommendations from staff, but it would not be limited to that, and the, and the resolution does say "but not limited to."
Okay, sounds good.
Any other questions or comments from council? Please poll the council on item number 4. Motion carries seven, zero. Thank you. Would somebody please ask Mr. Starker to please come back? Because he's doing number five. Good thing he didn't run to the restroom. So thank you. Item 5, Mr. Starker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce item number 5. This is a motion to approve the written findings and decision in case number SUP-12-01 of Wellspring Bible Church and deny the application for a special use permit at 3010 Newland Street. At issue is the consideration of written findings and decision denying application by Wellspring Bible Baptist, Bible Church for a special use permit in an R1 zone. Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve the written findings and decision in case number SUP-12-01 as submitted and deny the special use permit for 3010 Newland Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval of item number 5, it was seconded by Councilmember Demott. Discussion on item 5?
Yeah, I'd like to say that I continue to disagree with both the result and the findings as written. I believe that the original staff report was accurate and reflected it met the conditions, and therefore, I'll be voting now.
Any other comments or questions from council? Please poll the council on item 5. Motion carries six to two with Councilmembers Pond and Reinhardt voting no. Thank you. Item 6 is Resolution Number 26-2012. Councilmember Pond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution Number 26, 2012, a resolution requesting the Denver Regional Transportation District to maintain Bus Route 32 west of Wasworth Boulevard. At issue, the Denver Regional Transportation District has prepared, has a proposed Fast Tracks West Corridor Service Plan that calls for the termination of several bus routes in the southwest portion of the city, including Route 32 west of Wasworth Boulevard. RTD Route 32 provides service to approximately 80 students at Weirich High School. Elimination of 32 bus service would be a tremendous hardship on these students and their parents. The RTD Board of Directors is scheduled to approve the West Corridor Service Plan at its May 22nd meeting of 2012. The bus service changes would be implemented in May 2013 when the west line is placed in the service. in the service. Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order with your amendments.
Thank you. I move to approve Resolution 26-2012, a resolution requesting the Denver Regional Transportation District to maintain Bus Route 32 west of Wadsworth Boulevard with the following changes and additions. Whereas the elimination of Route 32 service west of Wadsworth would be a tremendous hardship on the Wheat Ridge High School students and parents, and whereas the elimination of Route 32 service west of Wadsworth will dramatically impact residents' ability to commute to work or school in Denver.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, was seconded by Councilmember Stites. Mr. Goff, will this be edited and then sent out to the 15 board members like the letter that was drafted was?
Yes, it will.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Stites?
Who's our RTD rep for this area?
Mr. Matt Cohen.
Can we make sure?
Yes, he'll be also.
He gets a copy plus a phone call.
Any other comments or questions on item six? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you, Ms. Avery. Do you have a copy of the amendment?
I do.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our agenda for the evening. We'll move on to City Managers Matters.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make sure the public is aware of a emergency preparedness drill that is scheduled for this Wednesday, May 16th. An example of Lutheran Hospital will be participating in that. There was a similar event last year, but there will be some helicopter traffic flying in and out of the hospital to the airport. So don't be alarmed, this is a test, only a test. There are some signs up along the hospital. We're out also to notify citizens that they will be performing the test, and our police department will be participating in that also. And also, there's some upcoming work scheduled for the Gold Line coming into Wheat Ridge. They are, believe it or not, starting on this project, they have been, and there's some water line relocations that are going to take place here in the next several weeks. So you will see some activity in the area, that general area. For more information on alternative routes, if there's going to be any detours, you can find that on the Fast Tracks website. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dahl?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
City Clerks Matters?
I actually have something informational. This is the last televised meeting before the deadline to register to vote in the primary. Primary for the parties are, and there's going to be three parties listed, Democrat, Republican, and the American Constitution Party. The primaries are on Tuesday, June 26th. The last day to register for that primary is Tuesday, May 26th, this coming May. I mean, this coming 26th of May. There are a number of ways to register. You can register in person at the motor vehicle office there at 20th and Wadsworth that we're all familiar with. It's kind of handy that Wheat Ridge has that so close. And there are, but there are a number of ways that you can either register or change your party affiliation. If you want to change parties, or if you wanted to change from unaffiliated to some party so you can vote, you can do that online. Ultimately, all voter registration is done at the, with the Secretary of State. You can access that through the county. Their website is votejeffgo.com. The city also has some links to that. Under the, if you go to the city website, under the Clerks Department, there is a link for the, this year's primary and, for this year's primary and elections. You can click on that and get the link to register there. Also, today, we added in the quick links on the lower right-hand side of the webpage, we added a link there to, where there's, you open it up in the clerk's office, and there's links there for registering. The primary ballot will, the primary election will be an all-mail-in ballot. Unaffiliated voters can look for a postcard to let them know if they want to declare party affiliation. They can do that online. When the ballots come out, there will also be service centers that will open up on June 4th. The one closest to us in Wheat Ridge, obviously, is the motor vehicle office at 20th and Wadsworth. And that's also going to be open on Saturday, June 23rd, from 10:00 to 2:00. That's kind of later down the road, but the thing you want to remember right now is, if you want to vote in the primary in June, you need to register by May 26th. That's a Tuesday. That's all, thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
What I'd like to do is make a request to see if, at one of the study sessions, we could look at the final 38th Avenue plan as far as, and this might be a situation, since we're using the forms of transportation throughout our meeting, the train might have already left the station. But I guess there's, were concerns voiced at our district meetings about the bus pull offs, and, and my understanding was there's two bus pull offs, but is it two on each side, or is it one on each side? And so I, and then the other, my other request is, I know there was some data gathered as far as from RTD that these were the most frequent stops, and I guess I'd like to just see that data, see the stops, see the other stops. I mean, are the other stops significantly fewer, or is it just slightly fewer? I guess I, since I've been on City Council, there's not been any review of the final 38th Avenue, and I'd like to at least take a final look at that. I'm not sure if it's something that's said and done that can't be relooked at, but just making that request.
So I would suggest that you make a motion to put it on the study session, and then you can have a second, and then have council vote on it, because, or you could get two people to sponsor with you, you and somebody else. You have two choices.
I'd like to make a motion to review the final 38th Avenue development plan, especially the RTD stops and some of the numbers that back up the decisions.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'm glad it's seconded. I was going to make a friendly amendment that maybe we could sneak it in during the, would you think we have time to sneak a session in on the weekend when we're all together anyway?
We really don't. It's a pretty tight agenda.
Then the timeline for the painting the streets, so far ahead of any opportunity we get in study session. I would like to remind staff that this specific question was asked once before in February, and no opportunity?
I'm sorry, specific question about?
It was a specific question as to whether staff had ever really briefed the final geometry. No, I personally got, brought up this feed, but that we did ask once before to have this done, which is why I'm supporting Councilor Davis in this request.
Yeah, we'd be happy to bring it back.
And my intent is not to delay the process, but I guess my intent is also to make sure that we all are fully aware of 38th Avenue, and I want it to be successful, but I don't want people angry because they're waiting behind buses and things like that, so.
Okay, so we have a motion to bring to a study session to review the 38th Avenue plan, specifically the RTD pullouts, the RTD data. Was that accurate enough?
Mm-hmm.
It was seconded by Councilmember Stites. Please poll the council on the main motion.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
None.
Mr. Starker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things that it seems like we've had some discussion at council or either in our study sessions, but we really haven't closed the loop on. One of them is another discussion about council pre-meetings that's still sort of holding open, as far as I know. And the other one that I don't know that we've closed the loop, we might have, but I don't know where we are, is roadside memorials. And we had a discussion some months back, and we didn't, I believe, close the loop. So I would just like to see if those are still on an agenda for a future study session.
Well, I could mention on the pre-meeting, it was brought up at the last council meeting, but we had one member absent, so was asked to bring it up at a study session, and Mr. Stites brought it up Monday night, but we had still people missing. So you could bring it up now if you want on the pre-meeting.
It's scheduled for June 4th pre-meeting, or meeting.
Will everybody be there?
Be there.
Be there, or we're voting without you.
How about the roadside memorial?
We have not rescheduled that. I think we're waiting for traction on that. There was, there was an email distributed, I think, by Mr. Pond.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to brief people on that at a study session, or whatever's convenient. I certainly have followed up with that and have more information.
I guess it would be my hope that we could, you know, schedule that for another study session, so we sort of closed the loop on that discussion.
That's fine, yeah.
Okay.
And with that, I have nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pond?
Nothing this evening.
Mr. Demott?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Langworthy?
Thank you. I do have something, but apparently I can't find the exact time, so I guess I'll give the information, and if anybody's really interested, they can look at Lutheran. Lutheran Hospital is having a safety fair this weekend, the 19th, with a lot of fun events, and where they'll be checking car seats and helmets on, for bicycles. So I believe it's from 10:00 to 2:00 on Saturday, May the 19th, but it could be a little bit earlier than that. So if you have some time, they're doing a cake walk at about 11:30, so if you want some cake and safety, you can get them both.
Thank you. Mr. Stites?
Yeah. I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but with all the rain that we've had, there's weeds popping up all over, and I just kind of want to warn you to make sure once they reach, what is it, the magical 12 inches or whatever, you may get a call or a stop by from code enforcement. So please watch that. And not only that, it makes our city look much better when they're all gone. This is a great time to relocate your home or business to Wheat Ridge. If you need any help, contact one of us or staff. Getting back to weeds, it would be a great thing, a positive thing, if you would help your neighbors if they're having problems getting out there. Doesn't mean that you can't get out there and pick some. And as always, please try to find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jay?
In regard to 38th Avenue, this Wednesday, 8:00 AM at the REC Center, there's a pretty important meeting regarding, the leadership committee meeting, but the public is welcome and very welcome to this, because at this meeting, they'll be narrowing down the branding and marketing plan for 38th Avenue. It's 8:00 o'clock Wednesday morning at the REC Center, 8:00 to about 9:30, I think.
Good, thank you. Mr. Reinhardt?
Two things from the Colorado Municipal League Policy Committee meeting last week, two potential changes to their legislative amendment to their policy statement. They're, I don't think they're terribly exciting, and I'm going to hand them around and wait if I receive comments back. Ultimately, the policy committee will have to vote on these changes to their thing, and I'd like feedback, or if anybody's. One of them is simply a broad statement about education, which is pretty harmless. And the other is a statement relating to use of transportation funds that tries to amend. It's, in my mind, and you can certainly read what I hand around, it's about the allocation of public dollars to public transportation, and it really is an attempt to make the language of the policy statement, considering it's consistent with law in the state. I don't think it's any broader than that. But I'll hand it out. If anybody has any concerns or wants to express an opinion, it comes up for a vote at some point. I don't know the date, but it's not imminent, and should feel free to let me know if there's a strong feeling, and if anybody thinks we should discuss it in council, we can add it to a study session generally. I think it's sort of below the noise level myself, but I'd be glad to add it to the study session agenda if asked for it, so if somebody requires, thinks it's worth discussing. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick things. I wanted to let the public know that a letter went out from the city of Wheat Ridge, also signed by Cindy Stevenson and the principal at Wheat Ridge High School, in opposition to the 32 bus line being discontinued or shortened. That will affect approximately 70 to 100 high school students and their parents, obviously. Also, people who wants to ride downtown, that go to school downtown, as Mr. Pond mentioned earlier, and also, they're employed downtown, if they're going to school downtown. So the letter went out to 15 board members of RTD that was signed by those three entities, and then tonight, the city council passed a resolution in opposition of the 32nd Avenue route being discontinued. So, and then Mr. Davis is also, Mr. Reinhardt is actually working on some other routes that may affect MCPN at 29th and Wadsworth. So I appreciate that, and if you have anything to put on the agenda, let us know. I also wanted to thank the council members and the board members who went to the Jefferson Center for Mental Health fundraiser on last week. We had Mr. Demott and his wife, I went with my wife, and we also had Diane Robb from the Cultural Commission and her husband, and also Tom Abbott and his wife attended. That was at the art museum, and it was a fundraiser for Jefferson Center for Mental Health that was sponsored by the city of Wheat Ridge, so I appreciate the council supporting that, and also supporting the Jefferson Center for Mental Health. They are a business in the city of Wheat Ridge, a nonprofit, and they have about 200 employees. And so with that, I want, last thing I wanted to mention is, I was, as many of you know, I also work in the Jefferson County School District as a teacher, and I've been approached by several principals who have seen the demographics of the middle schools and all the schools change, where up to 80% of the students are on free and reduced lunch. And that affects scoring, you know, the CSAP scores, the acuity scoring. And so those folks asked me, you know, what is the city doing to address these issues along with the schools? So I talked to city, the city manager, Patrick Goff. We're setting up a meeting where the principals will come in and talk to staff about issues and programs that are available with the school district and with the city, and sort of just the information sharing. You know, we have our school resource officers, and that's really working well at the two middle schools and the high school. So this meeting will be during the day, staff will come in and give their information to the principals, because the more information the principals have, the better they can address the issue, and then also, if the school knows about the free and reduced lunch and the scoring and what we can do. I think a lot of the principals don't even realize we've got a lot of great things happening in the city of Wheat Ridge, and we have programs at the REC Center, we have a lot of new developments going on, and so it's well, really, to educate the principals and the teachers about what's happening in the city of Wheat Ridge. A lot of those principals don't go west or east of Wadsworth, you know, most of the schools are out west. So it's going to be a positive event. We've also asked Enterprise Wheat Ridge, now that Wheat Ridge Business Association, to attend. I don't know if you knew this, but the city of Arvada has a, an agreement with the Arvada Chamber and the Jefferson County School District. They do careers, job sharing, job shadows, and it's a really good program. So we're trying to see if we could actually work with our business association to be part of that, where we can have a resource, so they can come in, talk to students about careers. We could also use those folks for job shadowing, job shares. We've done that in, you know, indirectly with some of the businesses in the city of Wheat Ridge, but we like to get Enterprise Wheat Ridge involved and those groups together so that they're all working together, especially at the high school level. So we'll have more of a synergy between those folks. And so anyway, that's what this meeting is about. It's really to get the school district and the schools in Wheat Ridge, plus the city, all together kind of talking about what's offered and not offered, and what we can do. For example, our social worker at the high school really has no idea what the programs the REC Center offers for any of the students, you know, for physical or mainly physical. Like, if we have students that need extra activities or work, they don't even know about some of the programs we have at the Wheat Ridge REC Center they could take advantage of, so. Does anybody have any questions about that? Council will be invited. It's going to be during the day, like, it'll be probably just a half day, we'll have lunch here, and those folks will be here, the principals, probably a half a dozen principals, and then staff will go in and give them their information about the city, and then the principals will update our staff about what's going on, so. I think it's positive. And lastly, I just wanted to let the residents know and the council know, I'm getting a lot of comments from people about all the new construction going on in the city of Wheat Ridge, a lot of new activity, you know, the housing authority is kicking in, 2020's kicking in, we have a lot of new private enterprises going on at 44th and Wadsworth, 29th. Oh, by the way, Patrick, do you have an update on the project across the street? Have they started up again because of the water tables?
Yeah, I believe that they're going to come in this week to start moving the dirt work. They don't have a permit to, to start the construction yet. We're still waiting for those plans, but they do, they can start dirt work, and it's my understanding they're going to start that this week.
Okay. So anyway, good job. I think we got a lot of good stuff going on in the city of Wheat Ridge. Orger?